Okay, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order for Thursday, July 5th, 2018. Please rise to join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Being a special meeting, we have no public input tonight. So, the first order of business is approval of the special meeting minutes from Tuesday, June 26th. I'll second, and you were out of town, I think, right, Paul?
No, not that one.
No, no, that's not the one. All right. Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor. Are there any corrections, additions, comments?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Item number two, consideration of requests from Stony Hill Fire Department for self-contained breathing apparatus bottles. We actually approved this at our last meeting, but there was an error in the form. We approved one bottle because the unit price is $1,205 and the piece of paper that we had in from the vendor didn't have the number that was being purchased. Yeah. Okay, so, we don't, so what I want to do is just redo that. I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve the purchase of 12 Scott 45-minute carbon filter air cylinders for the Stony Hill Fire Department from the vendor AAA Emergency Supply Company at a unit price of $1,205 each and a total of $14,460 to supersede the previous motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that?
No.
Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries, and we'll give this to the Board of Finance because that'll be from the Capitol nonrecurring from the 2017-2018 year, like it was before. Item number two, discussion of charter revision, and I have provided my input via this memo. And, so, hey Marty?
Yeah.
I put on this discussion, but can we vote on these if it doesn't say consideration of?
Yeah, I think you can.
Okay.
There's enough notice to generally.
Okay. All right. If our audience members would like a copy, I've got extras. You can pass that back to Sharon. Thank you. So, these are the items that I, is my recommendation to my two colleagues that we should give as a charge to the Charter Commission. Have you guys had a chance to read through that?
Oh, absolutely.
All right. Well, before we start putting motions on the floor, any discussion?
Let's go one by one here, and I'm sure, you know, I've got some additional items too that I would like to discuss.
Okay, all right.
Perhaps as an addendum to this whole thing.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, do you want to just take them in order?
Yeah, I want to take them in order, and we'll do mine last.
All right. All right, then I'll put a motion on the floor that we recommend changing Section C3-4 under Board of Selectmen, changing the entire board from a two-year term to a four-year term.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, you know, I think personally, you know, we approached this last time, and the reason why I think it failed last time was the fact that we were thinking about going to a five-man board, and then they were having alternating terms. I think it confused everybody.
I think it got too complicated.
Yeah, and now, I've got to say, if the Board of Education, Board of Finance, these are, you know, all major boards, just about our four-year terms. I think this is sort of consistent, and I think this has a reasonable chance of being accepted by the population. So, those are my comments.
All right.
I agree too. Last time, we had the five-man board there, and it was probably more confusing, just like Paul had just mentioned with the offset terms and stuff. So, this would be just a straight four-year term for the Selectmen, through Selectmen. I think that's a good move.
All right. Okay, any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that carries, so we'll add that.
Sir, was there a second to that?
Yeah.
Paul seconded it.
Oh, yeah, Paul seconded it. Item C2-5, eligibility for office. That's, Section B of that currently prohibits town employees from serving on the Board of Finance, Planning and Zoning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Inland-Wetland Commission. And my recommendation is that we include in that prohibition Board of Assessment Appeals, that town employees would not be able to serve on that. And then a second part is, and this is just a personal recommendation to you, so I hope there's a good discussion on it. I recommend that we prohibit Board of Finance members from simultaneously serving on any other board or commission appointed or elected. And I don't think we've really ever had an ethics problem that I've, that I can remember, but what we have had is, we've had people, a member who was serving simultaneously on the Park and Rec Commission, and that individual, you know, was careful to recuse himself from votes, but what it meant was, you didn't have a full board considering that budget, and they were removing one vote from the process, and there were times when there were two votes being removed because of that. So, I just think that the Board of Finance is such an important board and carries so much power that if you're going to be a Board of Finance member, that should be the only board that you serve on while you're, while you're serving on it, that you shouldn't serve on another. So, I'd like to put that motion on the floor.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
Why not have it for all boards?
Exactly. Okay. You mean, just serve on, if you're on a board, then?
Or is that kind of for us, if we're on, well, we're like, well, at least we're elected too, if we run the?
On PUC?
PUC and Selectmen, so.
Well, not really, because that's built into the charter, that the PUC is part of the?
Yeah, I think it should be for, in that way, we have more people in mouth.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, because when you really think about it, Matt, I've got, my first concern is Park and Rec, Library, you know, these are major budget items, and to have them serving on Board of Finance or something like that, that just doesn't cut it with me.
Okay.
Can we clarify that? You're talking about the Board of Finance, you're talking about any board.
Any board. Okay, I think that makes sense.
I'm still, so now you've got three different things you're talking about. You're talking about town employees, you're going to have Board of Assessment Appeals that they can't sit on that, and then you're going to have, you're going to prohibit members of the Board of Finance from serving on any other board or commission, and then Richie's talking about you can only serve on one board or commission.
Right.
So, you've got three different things.
Actually, two.
Unless the Charter says otherwise.
Yeah, well, two, because what I was going to do is amend my motion. Well, first of all, the part that I read, Section B, currently, Section B currently prohibits town employees from serving on Board of Finance, Planning and Zoning, so on, that, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, I'll break that into two motions, so that they're separate. I wanted to include Board of Assessment Appeals into that prohibition that town employees shouldn't, shouldn't serve on that, but my first motion has to do with the Board of Finance, so I'll withdraw the motion and I'll amend it. So, I will restate that as motion to prohibit any elected or appointed member of a board from simultaneously serving on any other board or commission, with the exception of the Public Utilities Commission, against granted by Charter. So, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Does that, does that meet the two?
I think so.
Okay. Paul?
It's okay with me.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Okay, so then the second part of this is to, currently eligibility for office, Section B prohibits town employees from serving on Board of Finance, Planning and Zoning, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Inland-Wetland, so my motion would be to just add Board of Assessment Appeals.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, so. Discussion?
No.
Just, you know, on the same issue, do we want any of the other town employees to be on, let's see, what other boards are, let's see.
Some of these are prohibited by statute.
Oh, some are statute.
Some are statute.
Like the Police Commission?
No, I think Planning and Zoning is by statute, and it might be the Zoning Board of Appeals. There's a couple that I know, I remember researching them before, there's a couple that are, can't, if you're employed by the town, you can't sit on certain boards and commissions. So, I'm just mentioning that, because I don't know if we wanted to change something or just add other boards.
My idea was just to add Assessment, Board of Assessment Appeals. Yeah. But.
Well, maybe Charter, when, once they get it, they can get a ruling on what boards and commissions are prohibited, and they could look at.
Pretty sure it's the land use boards and maintenance, but, but, Mike, I was going to save it for the end, but I'm going to say it now. Are you just giving them this, these charges tonight? That's it, whatever you come up with, or are you letting them do whatever they want?
Well, my, my, my impression was that we give them this charge, but they have the statutory authority to do what they want anyway.
I think they changed that. I think, I think, now I'm going to have to go back and look, but I think what they did was they, they give you, the appointing authority, the choice. You can say, here's what we want you to discuss, and that's it, or we want you to discuss this, and anything else you think should come to our attention.
Oh.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so we would have to decide that separately, I think.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you want them to discuss other things, you just, even if the statute doesn't say that, you just say that, you know, that is what I'd like you to do.
Yeah.
I think, you know, give them the opportunity to look at other things. I mean, I hope they're going to begin reviewing all the department heads and something like that, and they, department heads might come up with some other ideas too.
Yeah.
I think they should have a little leeway on what they're looking at.
Okay. All right. All right, so where, do we still have? We still need to vote on the Assessment Appeals.
We have a third, we have a second.
Okay. All right, so on the, all right, I'm going to, I'm just going to add a sub-note on that to include in the prohibition the Board of Assessment Appeals subject to council review, if that is statutorily correct.
Yeah, all right, I'll read that.
Okay. All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries? Okay, now, here, we've got a couple of big ones. Section C6-3, under annual town budget meeting, B, Section B, item two, non-binding advisory I believe that those two, too high, too low questions are ineffective, they don't provide valuable feedback to the town government, and they take up valuable places that we could add other things to the ballot if they were removed. Case in point being this year, we had a request on the Capitol thing to separate out the turf field issue and make it a separate ballot item. We couldn't do it because you have limited space on the ballot and a limited number of slots in the computer, and I think these advisory, in, the last time I looked, I went back 19 years, and in every single referendum, without exception, they always said too high, even when they passed by a wide margin. So, I think these don't provide feedback, I think the method of providing feedback via simple contact with the public, through the public hearing and through the town meeting process, is far more accurate. So, I'd like to make a motion that we eliminate the non-binding advisory questions as a recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, floor is open?
I think personally, I agree with you, Matt, because I looked at, back at my records too, it doesn't matter, the questions never, the results of the questions never matched, frankly, the budget itself. It's always been, you know, I know a lot of people in my neighborhood, they voted for the budget, but they always say it's too high. So, I've never known anybody knocks on the front door and says, I want to pay more taxes.
Right.
I concur with that. It's always, we've seen it's always too high, but they still pass.
Yeah.
Or you put another line on it that says just right, you know.
Right. All right. All right, so we'll take a vote on that, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, that carries. Okay, here's another big one. This is the last big one for the night. Failure to adopt. We currently have a bifurcated budget. We have a town budget and a school budget. Approximately half the towns, maybe more than half the towns in Connecticut have similar, similar budget structures, so they have a bifurcated budget with town and school being separate. My proposal is to modify the procedure a little bit and give the Board of Finance, Board of Finance will fall over if they, they know, I'm actually trying to give them more, more authority, but I want to give the Board of Finance the ability to balance both sides of the budget until they both pass. And the reason I'm proposing this is because the way our charter is structured, if one of those two bifurcated budgets passes, it's locked, and you can't change the other one. No other town does it that way, and the reason for that is, if you can, you get in, we came close to, we've come close to it twice, where the school side passed and the much smaller town side didn't pass, and if there's a real serious budget challenge, there could be a tremendous amount of damage to the smaller side of the budget, which contains vital town services. And then the other thing to consider is that the town side of the budget is not strictly town. It carries all of the school costs except teachers and supplies. So, debt load, insurance, pensions for the, for the non-teaching staff, liability, all that stuff is all loaded on the town side, and, oh, and utilities, and it can't be touched. So, in a case like we saw this year, and then I think it happened again three years ago, where the school side passed, and then the Board of Finance could only make the ballot, you know, bring the budget down to where the voters wanted it by hitting one side, and you can't touch a good 20% of that budget. So, there can be a tremendous amount of harm done to town services if the Board of Finance doesn't have the ability to balance both sides. Second reason is that I think it's important to keep all of our voters engaged. So, if, if one budget passes and the other one doesn't, we want to avoid a situation where people say, well, I was only interested in that thing anyway, I'm not going to go vote. So, this, this is my, my proposal, is to alter C6-3C, Failure to Adopt, to consider, not consider either side locked until both sides pass. So, my motion is to, how do I state that? Motion is to alter C6-3C to permit Board of Finance to adjust both town and school budgets until both pass.
So, all right, I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
And just run through this. So, if, take this past year, for instance, if the Board of Education passed and the town didn't pass, it would not be locked, but the Board of Finance would have the opportunity to adjust the Board of Education budget?
Correct.
So, isn't that really going back to a single vote?
It's going back in that direction, yeah. It, the, I thought of that too. In my mind, the only thing that we still get from having a bifurcated budget is that it does provide the Board of Finance with some valuable feedback, if one side passes and one side doesn't. I mean, so, it's going to put the Board of Finance, if that happens again, it's going to put the Board of Finance in kind of an ugly position, because, but if they look at the cuts that are going to have to be made on the smaller town side of the budget, they might be forced to, you know, take a little bit more off the Board of Ed, or vice versa.
Okay, so if, if, so technically it fails.
Yeah.
Because the Board, even if the Board of Finance left it alone, it would still have to go back for a vote.
Correct. Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, even if they didn't change it, the both things would have to be on the ballot again.
Yeah.
Because you.
Yeah, that's what you're saying. Yeah, right, it would.
Yeah. But if they adjusted it, it's definitely going to be on the ballot, but if they left it the same.
Right.
It's not an automatic lock.
Right.
Yeah, because, you know, what happens, the Board of Education has a big lobbyist, and, you know, people turn up for their vote, and when it comes time for the town vote, you know, there's 10% less people to vote, vote. I mean, we could get some numbers from Nancy and Tim on that, but, you know, we see that happening. So, you know, by not approving the, say, the Board of Education, I'm just referring to that because it just happened, they'd have to turn up and vote for the whole thing again.
Right, that's correct. Oh, the other alternative would be to go back to a single budget, but I remember that the reason I didn't propose that is that when the bifurcated budget was done in 2007, it had a lot of, lot of support at that time.
Well, it's pretty much a single vote.
Yeah, it is.
But it's given you the opportunity to, you know, the people are saying the Board of Education is right and the town is wrong, or vice versa.
Right.
And it's up to the Board of Finance to make the adjustments.
Right.
I'm going to vote against this, okay? I'm going to tell you a couple of reasons why. One, I was one of the guys who pushed for the bifurcated budget. All two, if I recall history, every time the budget failed, the town side got whacked.
Yeah.
For education. Secondly, you know, when you really think about it, it's a very, it's going to be a highly controversial issue. I've done a sort of a little survey, mini-survey on this, about roughly about 50 people, primarily up in my neck of the woods and talking to a few people, and I haven't found one person who's even in favor of this. And the biggest argument that I'm receiving, and I agree with it, is the fact that you're saying that if I vote down, or vote for a budget, the town or Board of Finance has the ability to override my, my vote. I don't like that, that's what they're telling me. I think right now, if you take a look at the history, I want to say, look at the last 10 years, here, we've only, we've only had a couple extended referendums here, we haven't had that many, and things are working well, frankly. As I said, the biggest thing that I'm hearing from people is the fact that you're overriding my vote, and that's not the way I voted. And theoretically, you know, Rich, what you said, you know, we have a big school lobby, you know, that's true, but at the same time, I want to say that most of schoolies, schoolies, school people, they, they understand the town, they understand the necessity for the town side too. Yeah, sometimes there's an irritant that they don't like, I grant you that, but, you know, I would rather leave it as is, as I said, the big objection right now is you're overriding my vote.
Let me, I understand, I understand the point. The question I would ask is, in your, in your mini-survey, do people understand that the school budget is not just, it's, that the town budget is not just the town budget?
No, they don't, and they don't care.
Yeah.
They really don't care. It's a school.
Can they load that side back onto the school side?
Prorate it?
Yeah.
I don't know, because, because right now, on, in the, included in the town budget, you have debt payments.
Yeah.
School maintenance.
Insurance.
Utilities, water, fuel, electric.
Non, non, non-education personnel.
Yeah, not, right, and insurance.
I understand that. I think this is, you know, it's sort of a common denominator in every town.
Except we're the only town I've found that doesn't allow their Board of Finance to balance both sides if they have a failure on one side, for that reason, because they're all accounted for the same way. And the thing that really concerns me is, we saw it in this last budget, in the first referendum, school side passed, and it was, what, a 1.9% increase?
Right.
So, then the, then people looked at the town side, they said, oh, that's, that's a 3% increase, that's much too high. In other words, instead of looking at the town budget as a whole and saying, okay, this is 2%, it's less than inflation, they focused on that increased number, and again, you can't change these numbers, so.
I grant you that.
So, if they, if they, if they, if they create an arbitrary goal and say, all right, we're not going to pass that thing until it's down to inflation too, and you've got probably, at this, when I looked this up, it's 2.5, $3 million worth of things that you can't change, you could, you can take, I mean, you're really doing a lot of harm to that side of the budget.
I grant you that, but you know, I've always said, there's three things that people vote for in this town. One, schools, two, my roads, and three, are you going to raise my taxes? You know, those are bottom line, and, and the school thing, I know all school supporters, you know, and you've been chairman of Board of Education, you know that. Once there's an acceptable budget, they're going to go with that thing. If you're going to take away their vote, you know, this could be detrimental.
Do you think that doing something like this would encourage them to look at the bottom line more than the two components?
No.
Okay. All right.
No. We, we've basically, you know, if you want to take, look at the history, as I said, since we've incorporated this, there hasn't been any four or five type, four or five times we've gone through a referendum. This has made peace in the community, you know, there before, it used to be the town people versus the education people.
That's true, that's true.
And we're no longer doing that.
That's true. Well, the, just to put the last item on the table, the thing that concerns me is that we're going to be in, starting in 2022, and we may or may not be here.
Oh, yeah, oh, of course. That people, I think, understand about the fact that we got to pay for these buildings.
Yeah.
That's not an issue.
But that's going to magnify the percent change on the town side.
And I think, I think it's incumbent upon the Board of Selectmen to say, okay, when it comes to budget season, especially at a town meeting, I think we have to emphasize what some of these school costs are, which are part of the budget.
Yeah.
And as a matter of fact, you know, I think that would behoove us to do that, because it's just telling the people, you know, being very transparent about the whole situation.
Yeah.
You know, this is not exactly just town, it's also education.
I'm going to support the motion, but I would like to, you know, let the Charter Revision Commission, you know, discuss it, look it over.
Sure.
And also to see what other things could be done. Could that debt load and the?
Yeah, the other.
The other costs go back to the Board of Education budget?
Right.
You know, you know, maybe, I don't know if there's statutes, or is it in the Charter that says that, or, you know.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Why is that portion out of their realm? That should be in their realm.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know how that happened, why it was done that way.
So, I mean, there.
That's a good question.
There are legal people to look into that, to see if it could be moved.
Okay.
So, I would, you know, amend a portion of that, to look into that option.
Okay, right. Or to seek other alternatives?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll restate the motion that way, and you can second. Okay, all right, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so, and? So, and, you know, when we present this to the Charter Commission, I will gladly talk about the hesitation on this, because, you know, these are important issues, and I think they need to look at everything.
They're gonna have public input on it, so, you know, people can come in and discuss it.
Right. My next one, I only have a couple left. C seven dash one, appointments by the Board of Selectmen. In, in short, this is giving the Board of Selectmen the, the ability to remove an appointed member if they fail to come to work. Because we've had, we've had instances, I think, three in the last couple of years, where a, an appointed member of a board actually moved out of town without resigning, and neither the town clerk nor the town registrars felt comfortable that they had statutory authority to remove their name, even though we all knew, you know, that they no longer lived here. So, this was, this is just to give the Board of Selectmen the ability, on request, the ability to vote to remove a member if they have gone, I think, what did I put in there, eight months or a year? I didn't put anything. Just give them the ability after a certain amount of time to, to remove a name if they, if they're not showing up.
I agree.
Okay, so I'll make that motion, that we recommend altering C seven dash one to give the Board of Selectmen the ability to vote, to remove an appointed, they can't remove an elected member, but move, remove an appointed member if they fail to show for an amount of time to be determined by the Charter Commission. All right, any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And then here's my, here's my favorite one. And I'm not even gonna put a motion on the floor, I wanna talk to you about it first. I, I still think that the Public Utilities Commission should be a fully appointed board, that we can get people like, actually, like, like you two and Pete and Dino on it.
Well, you know, I still think the Board of Selectmen should be involved in this, Matt. There's just a lot of money that we spend and ask the town to support. The question comes down to, if you wanna do that, should we increase that board by two more members? I don't know.
Or three?
Or three.
Yeah.
Then, as long as you have your Board of Selectmen there, because basically, you know, you're taking a look at the value, the money, the, the projects, you know? How, how well are they going along? You're, you're in control, basically, of, of it. So, you know, it's, those are my thoughts on it. Personally, you know, I know, yeah, you've got, you've got the advantage with both Richie and I, with all this experience, plus we have people like Pete and Dino.
Well, you, you, I mean, you're very good at that, you, because you've been, you're the, you may be the longest-serving Selectman in town history. But, I, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna just reveal personally. I, I don't feel like I had any idea what was going on with utilities for a good two or three years, starting here, because it, I, I had no background in that, and it was a real eye-opening experience. So, we are seasoned, Rich has great experience, and we've put two good, two appointed members on. I, I worry about the day that the three of us aren't there anymore, and we have people who don't really understand it, and that's.
Well, maybe by increasing the board.
Right, by maybe three more, or two more, or one more, I don't know.
Five. Two would be seven. They get to go two.
Well, maybe, maybe we should just make a recommendation that they examine the public structure, the Public Utilities Commission, with the goal of providing more expertise, and leave it up to the commission to see what kind of an alternative they wanna.
Because, I mean, the Board of, the commission would have to go back to the Selectmen's for
Yeah.
approval of money and everything.
Right.
The Board, the First Selectman is here every day. He could do calls or, or, you know, receive calls. I mean, we have the superintendent for the word part now. But, you know, the First Selectman is the key, key man in town.
And I have to admit, for, for a while there, the First Selectman didn't know what the hell he was doing. Which, you know, fortunately, I learned.
Well, I, I think with us having Tom now,
Yes.
dedicated.
I, I think that's one of the best hires we've ever, ever made, yeah. Okay, so.
And with that, I don't know if that would be included in here, but we need to change the Charter that the superintendent, or, what's his title?
Director of Public Utilities.
Director of Public Utilities reports to the First Selectman, not the Town Engineer.
Yeah, it's, it's, he, we did do that, we structured it that way, but you're right, the language needs to be clarified. Okay. All right, then I'm gonna make a motion that for C seven dash eleven, Public Utilities Commission, we recommend that the commission, Charter Commission, consider increasing the number of.
By two.
By two?
I would say by two, because you could appoint two from each party.
Yeah.
And then you still have either a majority
Yeah.
on a Board of Selectmen, okay?
All right, all right, I have, I have, I'm gonna withdraw that, because I'm gonna restate it, because I have another question for you. Should we rec, I don't know if there's any way to do this. I'm thinking of recommending, where practical or practicable, however, whatever the right word is, that the appointed members come from the water or sewer districts.
Or somebody with a.
With the technical knowledge.
Technical.
Technical knowledge, because you could, you could get a chemical engineer, you could get a general engineer in there, too.
Okay, all right.
Or you could have even a crazy scientist to understand something about the pH of water, and the pH of sewers, and waste and grease.
Okay.
Just leave the light at it to anybody.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'll make a motion. Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we alter, we recommend altering C seven dash eleven to be four appointed members. I don't know, should we include in the motion that they, that they, we were looking for technical qualifications?
With.
No, just leave it. Just, it'll be up to the elected people who.
Right.
Yeah, okay, all right, so that's. So, we're making a motion that the Public Utilities Commission be expanded to a total of seven members, with four being appointed. But the Board of Selectmen would remain as part of the Public Utilities Commission.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, is that good?
That sounds good.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's good. Section eight, C eight thirteen, this is just language changes. Make a motion that we change all references to data processing department to information technology. That's just a housekeeping thing.
Second.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meetings, this is a good one. The last charter revision contained a stipulation that all meetings had to be in this building, except for the Board of Ed, except for the library. So, all that did was, by exclusion, is it locked the Police Commission out of having meetings in their own building, and seeing as how we're gonna, in about a month, we're gonna be moving into a beautiful building that has a, an area easily accessible to the public, where you don't have to go through security to get there, very comfortable meeting room, I would like to remove that restriction, and just say, permit all board and commission meetings to be held in a town-owned facility accessible to members of the public.
Second.
Okay. The, the other thing is.
Finish the exception.
Oh, yeah, exception, yeah, and also in the motion, the exception being for field site inspections for planning and zoning and inland wetlands commissions.
Forty-one formations.
Yes.
In the past, has there been, and in the future will there be, need for field and site inspections for Board of Assessment, Field, Board of Education, Traffic Commission, Police Commission, Board of Selectmen?
Have to UC while you're at it, too.
All right, you know what, I'm gonna restate the motion and.
Just put accept site.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna cut out the planning and zoning, thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, exception made for field site inspections, period. Yeah, because you're right, that could, that could involve anybody. All right, do you still second?
Second, yes.
Okay. All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Second to the last one. C dash three dash two, Terms of Office. Just a technical word change, the word his to his or her.
Second.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the last one, section C four dash four, B, section D, C four dash five A, C eight dash thirteen, thirteen, C four, Roman numeral two, C ten dash two G, and C ten dash four A, these are all references to newspapers, and I would like to change all references to newspapers to publications.
Second.
And that would allow us greater flexibility.
Right.
All right.
Except for, by statute, except for by statutes.
Right, except by statute. All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's it.
Okay.
What about, oh, I'm sorry.
I've got three more.
Okay.
Three or four more.
All right.
Okay. Let me just preface my opening statement right here. Capital projects, construction projects, is my favorite subject. It seems that for years, we've been doing things backwards. And what I'd like to propose in, in the Charter is that any capital project of five hundred thousand dollars or more, that we have, we get the voter's approval to have an architect or whomever produce shovel-ready or construction-ready plans. This allows the public essentially to say, yes, I wanna go forward with this construction project, or no. Okay, so that when the plans are complete, again, the public has the opportunity to approve going forward, since the plans are construction-ready. I hate to use this example, our police station, or the classic example.
You could pick any project for the last ten years.
Right.
It's the same, same problem.
Same scenario, so essentially what this allows, allows the, the public to get involved in a project early, saying, okay, I'm, I wanna spend so much money with, through a bid process, with contact an architect or, or an engineer, engineering firm, say, how much is this gonna cost us for construction, ready-to-go construction plans, shovel-ready? That's one vote. And the second one is going to be upon the receipt of these completed plans, let's just say that we present this project to the people, and they say, no, we've got the completed plans. You know, it could be altered later, if necessary. But, at the same time, these plant, construction plans give us about ninety-five percent confidence limits. Whatever that construction cost is, it's just about set cast in stone. This, I think we've been doing it for years, is just going backwards. So I don't know where this would fit into, Marty, help me here, into the Charter.
I'm a little bit confused first, you're gonna have to help me out here.
Okay.
So what you're talking about is that what would happen is for any project over five hundred thousand dollars, what you would do is, you would get permission from the townspeople to hire an architect, and possibly some engineering people, in order to prepare construction-ready plans.
Yes.
Well, you're probably talking a lot of money.
Of course, no.
So then the second thing is, once the plans are done,
Right.
how are you gonna figure out the cost to spend?
Well, it goes out to, it would go out for a bid, again.
You don't have a construction manager. You don't have anybody that's gonna help the architect out. You know, the architect is only one, one part of the project.
Well, you can include a construction manager in that.
In, in the plan.
They could work concurrently together to develop the plans and a, and a cost estimate, and to get it ready for bid.
No.
Yeah, and then when you get the bids, everybody holds the bids, and I'm just talking out loud. Everybody holds, agrees to hold the bids for ninety days, and you go to a town meeting.
Right.
I should say a referendum, and then they vote on it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sure we could put it in there.
Okay.
The only suggestion that I would make is that you raise it to a million, because that's the referendum limit, anyway. I mean, is it necessary to go through that for a smaller project?
Okay. Well, whatever's convenient, if it's consistent with the Charter, fine.
Okay. All right.
So I don't know how we wanna phrase that. Voter approval for a capital project.
I think the way to phrase it would be to require submission of.
Of, of, of building plans allowing for construction-ready documents.
Yeah, I think, well, yeah, we're gonna have to.
Well, any, any capital project over a million dollars has to go before an architect and construction manager to present plans and, and cost estimates
Right.
to the public.
Right.
To the public site and.
Building.
Building.
No, no, not to the people.
Do that, because that's up to your purview. The Public Site Building Committee does not exist for any project unless you give them the.
No, we'd rather have it come before us here.
It's gonna be come before the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
That's right, and if you wanna pass it on to them and say that, that's okay. I mean, you could, you could appoint an ad hoc committee if you want for a project.
Because, you know, like you said, Matt, we can look at every construction project here, and it's been sort of a.
They've all had compromises.
Right. It's time to put an end to that.
Well, I mean, you, this is general language form, and they can pick it out with their.
Yeah. Okay.
To the Pacific. I mean, this comes back to us, too, for review, when we get asked them to modify anything that.
Exactly.
How about we phrase it this way, cap, capital projects of one million or higher must have complete project plans and blueprints prior to referendum?
Which, well, you have to have voter.
It depends.
Voter approval.
Prior to voter referendum for the project, but you might need a voter
Approval.
of referendum to hire the architect and construction manager, depending on the, the cost. I mean, look at the schools right now, that's over three million dollars for.
Worth it, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Just to get started. I mean, basically how it's gonna go, someone's gonna come before us and say that there's a need.
Yeah.
And then we can pursue this, for this language, that you need to hire, or we need to hire an architect and construction manager, and we'll get a, a cost estimate from some people for that, and then you'd have to go to the Board of Finance, and if it's over a million dollars, then you have to have a referendum for that.
Right, but you'd have at least several bids coming from, right.
Now, there's a good question, do we wanna raise, raise the, that amount higher?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Most, most towns have it set at five million.
Keep it at one.
Keep it at one?
Yes, I got too much feedback.
How about, uh.
You got tough neighbors.
No, it's beyond that even.
You know, I'm just throwing things out, what we're talking is, currently, we have, what, fifty thousand dollar limit on buying anything?
Yeah.
Before we have to go back to the town meeting? Is, for approval?
Yeah.
Is that something that anybody discussed that they would like that higher?
I haven't run into any problems with it, no.
Okay.
Yeah. Well.
Because before it was twenty thousand, we raised it to fifty in the last Charter.
Yeah.
And that has worked out.
Yeah, it's, it's worked out fine. There hasn't been any problems with that. So how do you, how do you wanna phrase this one?
What'd you write down so far?
I wrote down, capital projects of one million or more must have complete project plans and blueprints prior to final referendum approval. So that, kind of by default, means that if the blueprints and plans are gonna be over a million dollars, you have to have a referendum on that, too, but you still have to go through that process.
Can you stick in there shovel-ready, construction-ready documents?
Okay.
Well, Rich, is there such a thing as shovel-ready documents, before you get the bids and everything, and they look?
No, it says a complete set of plans that you.
Complete construction.
Well, complete construction plans.
I don't know if I do shovel-ready.
That's my language.
And I understand.
All right, complete construction plans.
And documents.
And documents. Prior to referendum for the, for, for final approval, okay.
Why don't you put to allow for bids? So that makes it clear that the plans have to be in such shape that you can go out to bid.
To, I would say for formal bids.
Right.
Okay. Capital proj, require capital projects of one million or more to have complete construction plans prior to referendum for final approval to allow for formal bidding. plans prior to referendum for final approval to allow for formal bidding process. Okay.
That covers it.
All right.
Yep.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay.
What else you got?
Uh, second, if this sort of is in the construction area here also, um, we have projects which are probably $100,000 or less, and yet we have to use prevailing wage. Is there any way, Marty, that we could?
I, I don't think $100,000.
No, 100,000, I think it's 125.
Okay.
I don't know what the exact number is, but.
But can we put something in the charter that we don't have to deal with prevailing wage?
I think that's statute.
It's a statute.
It's by statute.
Yeah.
By statute.
We can put it in the charter, but the state will.
All right.
I think the unions will be suing us in a hurry.
Yeah, and, and that's, and Marty might want to check on it too, just, um, that's for remodeling.
Yeah.
Anything.
I think it's 500?
Yeah, any, no, anything over 125 is prevailing wage, any new construction is a half a million, I believe.
Okay.
I have it memorized, but that's an.
All right. My last one is, what I'd like to see is, let us go back to the annual town budget referendum to go back to May. Because right now, this year we did it in March, and we really didn't know what, what up in Hartford they were doing. Originally it was in May, and it's because of our former compt- comptroller, you know, he took off a month vacation, so.
You know what the irony is?
What?
The whole budget was done in March anyway.
I know, I know.
It, we just didn't, we just sat around on it.
Yeah, well, it just gives us more time, I think, in constructing the budget too.
I, I agree with Paul. You know, for the few times that, you know, it, it might go into July and, and create an extra work for the tax office, I, I think, you know, we're, we're a little premature putting the budget together in December, starting in December.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I am not going to support that. I think the April date has worked out well. It, the, the last time we had a couple of failures before we made that change, um, the, because it takes the tax office so many weeks to do all the, not only the, the bills, but they have to do all the elderly tax abatements and things before they can put the bills out, the, the net change in interest that we lost that year was $136,000 that, that we failed to recover because the town did not get the bills out in time. And I'll, I'll be very blunt too, I think there's a second thing, is that I think it has, that moving it to April has increased, uh, public participation by, a little bit, because I, I recall budget deliberations in the town meeting, in the annual town meeting going on in May, and people frantically calling the parents who are out, you know, because school sports has started by that time, and the weather is warmer, and people are not thinking about the town. I think that the April date, um, works well. If, if we wanted to make a compromise, I would say move it to the second week of April, 7/1st, like, like make it April 15th or something. Ah, how about that?
No, thanks.
Yeah, but I, I, I don't think we've given this enough time to really work, and in, in this case, this year, when we did have a budget failure, they were able to get everything done, and, and it was close.
No.
But it, it worked out fine, and every, all the tax bills went on, out on time, and we, we lost the revenue for it.
But my, my only argument to this, Matt, is the fact that we never know what Hartford's going to do. It's, it's, it's always a roll of the dice, and I think we'd be better off, we'd be better off in the position postponing as long as possible until we get a good, a good feel from our representatives as to what the, the grants are going to be, and what's the reimbursements going to be.
I would say the counterargument to that is, um, last year, not this past spring, but the year before, we didn't know what Hartford was going to do till November.
Yeah.
And this year, we didn't.
It was last minute.
We didn't know till May 10th.
No.
So i- if, if we, if, if we, if we had never changed that date, if our referendum was in the first week of May, we'd still be in the same boat. I think we have to build our budgets without knowing what Hartford is going to do, I mean, maybe Hartford will get its act together at some point, and, and we'll have some, we'll have some more assurance, but I, I think it's, it's kind of a, it, it's chasing a golden dream if we, if we want to base our, our budgets around Hartford. I think if anything, we have to go the other way and be more self-sufficient, and if the money comes in, it can, I've, I've got some other ideas about how we can restructure additional revenue to, to offset taxes. You know, there, there are towns that have these things they call revenue stabilization funds, and they're fully approved by the bond rating agencies, they, you know, you can actually use it to, to mitigate your mill rate, and I've, I've got a proposal that I can show you guys that I was going to, I was going to do in a week or two, but I, I, I'm hesitant to, to move that date.
What, what is the current date we can use for this company?
First Monday in April.
Yeah.
Like I said, I could, I could go for, for second Monday in April. That way it doesn't. Oh, is it always spring break?
Well, it's, it's right there where.
Yeah. Well, that's a, that's another reason for keeping it early before spring break happens, and people kind of start forgetting about stuff like that.
How about the third Monday of April?
Yeah, and spring break falls either the second or the third, it's gone back and forth, just in the last couple of years.
Yeah. I, I just don't see that it has given us a problem, that, you know, there, there have been problems these last two years that would not have been mitigated had we still hadn't made a, it wouldn't have made any difference.
Yeah. So you have to be self-sufficient.
Yeah.
Try to deal with it.
Yeah. I mean, that, you know, we, and I think, I think this board and the Board of Finance did an excellent job of that this year too. We, we came up with a decent budget, and, you know, people, you know, we had a couple of controversies with the police station and the turf field, but after that, people accepted it, and so now we, we may have an additional 600,000 plus in, in revenue, we, it may get yanked out again, but if it does, if we get a new governor who says, boy, I, you know, the, sorry, towns and cities in Connecticut, nothing I can do about it, you're going to get whacked again, we, we've got no harm, because we were prepared for it, and I, and I think the, the earlier date actually helps us plan better. I, I, I think we did a good thing the last time.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I was for Paul's motion, but I'm listening to you, you know, it really doesn't matter what happens.
I, I, I just want to say, I, I just heard from too many people who said, why are you rushing this thing, you know?
Well, I get it, they, they would like the low, the lowest possible mill rate.
Yeah.
I, I get that, I, I think we're moving to a better place where we're planning better and moving away from those days where we always went to the lowest mill rate, and then we handle all these other things by, by crisis votes, so. Anyway, did you, did you make a motion on that, or are you just discussing?
I'll make the motion that we return to May for the annual town budget.
Okay, I'll second it, but, but I'll vote against it. And with, with all due respect.
Yeah. I, I agree with you on that.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll try your minds, those in favor?
Aye. Nay. Oh, wait a minute.
Okay, the, the motion is to move it to May.
Right.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
And then nay, okay. You guys went the other way. All right, what else?
That's it.
Okay.
What about the, the supervisor?
Oh, changing the language, yes.
The public utilities director.
Yes, hold on a second, let me, let me, uh.
I don't think there is a public utilities director in the charter.
There was.
That, and not only that, the public utilities director is appointed by the Public Utilities Commission, not, not the.
Right, and he was supposed to report to the town engineer, my understanding.
Oh, then you're talking about changing the.
You know, the other thing we got to do, um, when we publish a charter, we have to have, um, table of contents so we can find stuff. Because it's, it's under, um, appointed positions, and it's under, um, public, uh, Director of Public Works. Ah, here we are.
What are you talking, what are you looking at?
No, this is not it, Department of Public Works.
Yeah, well, what I was going to say is, the Better Course Project, I mean, is just to eliminate that the Department of Public Works includes the water and the sewer department, because it doesn't.
Right.
There's no control over them, it's a separate man.
Yeah.
And it falls, it'll stay under the auspice of the Public Utilities Commission.
Right, because when you appointed, when we appointed the town.
Yeah.
He just reports to you.
Yep, that's true. Yeah, it's, it's ambiguous.
Just like when you said you were removing that language from the Public Works.
Not that I want to open a can of worms, but we don't have a town engineer.
Yeah, I know.
You know, I mean, somehow that's got to be rectified at some point.
Yeah, I know. Uh, so, so what, what, how, how to phrase that?
I would just put a Department of Public Works where it says, um, it talks about that the powers and duties of the town water department, if I were town sewer department, I'd remove it. So it reads the powers and duties of the Town Department of Roads, uh, that's about all that's left, I guess, I don't know.
Okay, so, bless you. So I'll make a motion to modify C eight dash nine Department of Public Works. To re.
I would just say to, to remove references to the town water and the town sewer departments.
Yeah. Remove, uh, reference to town water department, town sewer department. Department of Roads. Buildings. Grounds. Uh, fleet, vehicles, I mean, if we want to specify what it does.
Yeah.
Yes, that's fine. Because he, when he comes in for his budget, he oversees all those things.
Yeah, right.
Was that buildings, fleet maintenance?
Inter, interstructure, I don't know.
Yeah, building.
Well, interstructure, water and sewer.
Well, and, and project management, because, you know, things, uh, like road construction, building renovations, there's a lot of involvement that, in there too. So the motion is to remove references to town water and sewer department and add, under duties, Department of, uh, roads, buildings, grounds, fleet maintenance, and project management, how's that sound?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, roads, buildings, grounds, fleet vehicles.
And, and project management.
And this is Department of Public Works?
Yeah.
Okay.
I suppose, Marty, that we, do we have a section in here that describes a utilities department that has?
Yeah, we do, but it doesn't say a whole lot, it's just that, that there is one. It's what you talked about before.
Yeah.
It doesn't really say, you just, where is it here? It was part of what you, most of the reference you had here, I don't have it.
Is C seven eleven, Public Utilities Commission?
Yeah.
Do we need to create a, a, a public utilities department, or is the, is the Public Utilities Commission enough?
You, you might want to just, well, it kind of says it already, if you look at B, it talks about that it also encompasses the duties and powers previously exercised and discharged by the Sewer Authority and the Water Commission of the Town of Bethel. The only thing I could think of is, you, you might just want to say, specifying that, you know, it deals strictly with the water and the sewer departments, that's all.
Okay.
Not to prolong it, but that the super reports to the.
Your first, uh, your first electman.
Well, there's, there's, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, because I was saying, there's no language in here, really.
Well, I know.
If you remove. But if you remove the language under the, what you were talking about before, under the Public Works Department.
Right.
If you remove that, then he doesn't report to them anyway, you know?
No. But it.
Just add it in.
Right into the, into the public utility.
Just add C.
Oh, C eleven?
Yeah.
C seven eleven?
C seven eleven, make it, uh, C, and the, uh, the director reports to the first electman.
Okay, section, all right, so, all right, so that motion, that's, that's good, so that motion is to, uh, recommend modifying Section C seven eleven, Public Utilities Commission, Section C, that there shall be a Director of Public Utilities who reports to the first electman.
Right.
Yeah, but we didn't vote on the C eight dash nine.
Oh, which one was that?
That was to remove references to the town water and town sewer, and to add Department of Roads, Grounds, Vehicles, and Project Management.
All right, on that, on that motion, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So now I'll, I'll, I'll complete my motion on C seven eleven, C, which is a new section, uh, that the, there shall be a Director of Public Utilities who reports, who is hired by the Public Utilities Commission and reports to the first electman.
Right.
All right, I'll second.
Want to put down and advises and consults with the Public Utilities Commission?
Sure. Yes.
To make it clear.
Did you get that?
No, I'm sorry.
Uh, there should be, shall be a director, good thing we're recording this.
Yeah, I, I could just go back.
This is, this is what they say, it's like making sausage, yeah. Uh, there shall be a Director of Public Utilities.
Reporting to the first electman.
Who, reporting to the first electman, who is, uh, employed by the Public Utilities Commission and advises and consults the Commission on Water and Sewer Operations and Planning.
And reports?
And reports to the first electman.
Okay. Is there a second one?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Matt, I, I made a motion, Matt, second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, anything else? Any, any further comment on that? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries? Okay, so, you guys got anything else?
You want to set a date to, to this, to the, do we have, we have to find an attorney first?
Yeah, we do.
Before we set a date?
I don't think we have to find an attorney before we set a date, but we have to find one pretty quick. Uh, any advice on that, Marty?
Well, I mean, if you want to meet with the Commission tomorrow, then I'd say, yeah, that's not a good idea, at least, let's get some viewers out for an attorney.
Okay. All right, um, we'll, we'll do that, and, well, I, I'm not even sure all the Commission members have been sworn yet either. Yeah, we'd have to check with the town clerk, so we'll, we'll put out, we'll start putting out some feelers and take it from there, and then we'll, you know, because I would like to meet with the Commission as soon as possible so we can pass this along. So, um, that completes our agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Interesting discussion.